Six of all, welcome to this meeting in the current control licenceing committee. May I have apologies please?
Apologies for missing from Mr Parkland and Mr Gaird.
Thank you very much indeed. Before I move to the rest of the standing members of the public who may wish to record or see things, however, the protocols should be rejoined by the members of the public, the honourable members of the public. I'm sure they're aware that they are not party to consent to be filmed or recorded. Thank you. And may I have a conference with somebody controlling the minutes please? Mister there, second Mr Oxley, those in favour please? And stations. Thank you very much indeed. Fine, thank you. I will need declarations of interest, Mr Oxley.
Without personal or prejudice, just to bring to the attention of good friends of mine drinking the water, so if we talk about the water, I'm mindful of the fact that I do have friends who drink it, I don't know whether or not...
You wouldn't wish to refer to either one?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Gaird. But my curie on the enforcement report, I do know that because and also on the application account, I do know both of that.
Thank you.
Non-curious.
Non-curious, thank you. Mr Oxley.
Similar, non-curious, I do know the application account.
Thank you. Any other someone coming around?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Parkland.
Mr King. See, I think we're getting to a point where I have done that like a hundred years. But more importantly, I am a member of both as a caravan and camping association and it doesn't give any curie interest for a few other officers.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. I have only item three petitions, deputations and questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have only reputations or any claim allegations.
Thank you, Mr Gaird.
And that case will move straight to the enforcement report, item five, which is page three on your papers. Now, before we move into that, you have an addendum report in front of you that does contain some representative information on the price, so I hope you didn't need to move into detailed consideration of it. It's particularly the second paragraph of that term, added end of report. On the side.
And Mr Chairman, this report relates to the oil or project house in Nottingham to unauthorized works which were taken place there. The outline of the property is highlighted in blue, you can all see that. Behind the parallel street to the market place. The actual two unauthorized works relate to a gate which encloses the listed building and to a smoking shelter that was erected attached to the listed building. This is the view looking down the private driveway from Queen Street. The actual gate is located here, you can only just see it. This is the view down the driveway looking into the car park and this is the gate you can see there, it's open. That's a view of the gate closed and that's a close-up of the gate that's been fitted. View from behind the existing, what used to be the existing gate. And this is the barbed wire that's been attached along the top of the fence or gate panel. This is the smoking shelter which is attached. Not very prominently to the listed building, it's very light weight structure and quite easily reversed. It's just been attached by bolts and again some painted slabs on the floor. The gate is not prominent within the conservation area, however, the barbed wire attached to it adversely affects the setting of the listed building. An application was encouraged for listed building, sorry, for planning permission, which would have been likely to have been approved subject to the removal of the barbed wire, but despite several promises, no application was received. The recommendation on this one is that enforcement action should be authorized to secure the removal of the barbed wire. Smoking shelter again is not prominent, has a limited reversible acceptable impact on the character of listed building. Again, applications for listed building consent and planning permission were encouraged but never received. Recommendation on the smoking shelter was that no further action should be taken. I'd like members to consider what actions they would like to take.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. And the typo in the second paragraph is not appropriate for the Ted Perks Society. Mr Oxley, your way to hand it.
And as is Mrs Cartwright.
Yes. I'll say.
I've been in this instance, so probably Mr Oxley has noticed this better than I do. My opinion on this occasion is so.
I'm very happy to, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, that might be right.
Well, basically.
Sorry.
I compare with the recommendations of the officer. Whilst it can be seen as a slithers, a crack of nut, attempts to have the barbed wire removed in a more meaningful way have failed, so I can't see any reason why we can't support this, whole support this action.
Mr Cartwright.
I don't think I've got a lot more to say to that. The smoking shelter is a lightweight construction, can be used for remove when it fails to be a shelter, I suppose that might happen in the future. Just be worried that they might in the future use the fact that it's been there to, it would be a precedent for something else, they could just put something else out that wasn't terribly appropriate, but I accept that we shouldn't take any course of action on it. But the only question I have is what type of gate was it then thought? It's a metal gate, it couldn't quite see from the photograph.
It looked like it was just a metal ringed gate. It did appear to have some wooden posts attached to the gate in its original, to which they've added like a fence panel.
Yes, I don't think the fence panels particularly appropriate there, but given that it's not visible from outside, I'll go along with that recommendation. The barbed wire is very friendly, so I think that such should be removed.
Other members? Mr Cross, or Mr King?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just think it's a shame that in that fairly attractive area, they haven't taken more care about what they've attached to the gate. It does look a rotten mess to me.
Mr King.
Thank you. I never wanted an officer recommendation, that's all, I totally agree with that, sorry. However, I am concerned that in this case, that's another plan, if there's a play action approval, then there would be plenty of trouble that I would have gone to write this report and have it approved. And I do think we ought to consider at some stage in future, if each council will consider how we deal with those, where somebody's up on their hands and actually cost them eleven whatsoever, and effectively they've not applied permission to get no action, it isn't part of the works on, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much, I think very clear point. And the key thing is power of three point eight, but you know, it may not have an effective impact on what you say. If there is no further data, is it something further, please? Mrs Wren? Second recommendation, please. Mr Cross, I saw first, and there isn't further. Mr Connaughton's is very multi-glory, mate. At least you numbers, thank you very much indeed, thank you. And don't feel obliged to wait if you want to.
Thank you, sir.
You're safe. Right, we now move on to the planning team. Thank you, Chairman. The application for you is for the retention of an immunity block and provision of car park, which is known as under lodge farm. The application site is located to the east of the village of Hamilton in the countryside, on the north side of Hamilton Peninsula. The applicant's land is in active agricultural use, although three residential dwellings are located immediately to the east of the farmhouse, those dwellings are in separate ownership, these three properties here. The applicants currently operate a caravan site from the farm, this section of the land just here. We've had a licence granted by the caravan club. The applicant is in process of seeking a licence from the caravan camping club to replace their licence, their existing licence, and they are allowed to five caravans and ten tents on the site. As I said, the applicants are seeking to retain the immunity block which comprises two toilets and one shower, which has been built for use in connection with the caravan operation on site and to provide a designated area for the associated car parking, although that car parking would take place in this area here, just to the south of the site within the immunity block is located. This is plan showing the extent of the applicant's agricultural holding. You can see a reasonably extensive piece of land, and it accepts these three dwellings and this part of the field to not. This plan, it does show the location of the immunity block in relation to the existing agricultural buildings. These are the existing agricultural building structures here, you may just be able to make out these three squares which is the immunity block itself. There is some existing tree planting around the edge of the immunity block and there's additional tree planting proposed in this location here. This is the area that would be designated for car parking and the existing campsite in, sorry, caravan site is located in this area here. This is a picture submitted by the applicants to the immunity block, as you can see, three shed type structures, and you may just be able to make out the planting in front of the units there. In terms of policy, officers have undertaken an assessment of the essential requirements for certified sites by both the caravan club and the caravan and camping club. Neither of those organisations requires the provision of immunity block or facility such as that which has been built. The officer report does detail the specified requirements with the caravan and camping club, the caravan club is very similar. I think the only difference is the minimum size around to which the licence will relate. Planning policy in the Rotherham water area makes it explicit that facilities must be essential for the operational requirements of use. These buildings are clearly not essential as set out by the licence terms by the caravan club and caravan camping club, and officers consider them definitely contrary to the Rotherham policies. In terms of visual impact, officers have undertaken a survey from various locations around the Rotherham water area. This is taken from immediately outside the site on Kenred, just outside Hamilton, and you may just be able to make out the existing agricultural buildings through the cabin hedge, you can just see there. The immunity block is located slightly to the left of this building beyond a further hedge. This is taken from the footpath and cycle path that travels around Hamilton. You can see this is one of the neighbouring properties, I'm just picturing, you can see the three dwellings located here, the immunity block located just beyond. Taken a view from further around, this was, apologize for the focus, under camera, it's auto-focused on the hedge rather than the unit behind, but you may just be able to make out some rough shapes here, that is actually the rooftops of the immunity block, they are visible if you're stood right up next to the hedge, but clearly not prominent. We then move to the north side of Rotherham water, this taken from Rotherham, and just about make out the rooftops on the existing dwellings in this location here, as you can imagine, the sheds are not on that location at all. And then slightly further on from between Rotherham and then, even again, you can see rooftops of the existing dwellings, and you can imagine the sheds are proportionately dull in relation to the dwelling. Conclusions therefore, as I have already stated, the facility isn't required by the terms of the licence that permits the use to which it relates, and it is therefore contrary to policy CS twenty four, for strategy, and as being said in the cycle traditions and policies from the document. Contrary to these two policies is sufficient to justify refusal of the scheme. The visual impact of the buildings has been assessed from a variety of points, and it noted that it is not, the structures are not prominent from those points, and the visual impact is therefore not a reason for refusal. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much indeed. Mr King.
Wait a minute, can we just go back to the normal round of the school? Thank you. So, that's it. Although a fair sized piece of land, by no means a large agricultural holding, I do believe they have a few fields elsewhere, and a lot of a way in that site that they farm, I'm not sure if they remember that, there are a couple of fields over there that they do farm, but it's not a large agricultural holding, and it's a sort of agricultural holding which frankly unless it are diversified, I'm not quite sure how they're going to require. The application is clearly for toilets, and we need to go back to that because there has been considerable concern by three neighbours on site, in particular two of them, and some sort of ongoing dispute essentially exists with the original owner, which is the local family, not the applicant, but the local family, and that's obvious, and therefore some of the objections you're seeing, I think are very valid objections, but not the service of toilets, are very valid objections to some of the activities that are taking place there, which would require some of that environmental fore directed in order to be drawn their rights. So I would ask that we focus on the issue of the toilet blocks. I absolutely agree with officers that both the caravan club and the caravan caravan club don't make it a necessity, but when we say it's necessary within our policies, then it is necessarily legally or is necessarily commercially viable. If you're providing for all the caravans, you're providing for caravans, then I don't think toilets are essential, because most of the caravans work in your facility. But for camping, it's a different story. Would somebody take your family to a site that doesn't offer toilet facilities, entirely relies on you having some sort of portal inside your tent or the separate tent? Or would you prefer to go to a site that has a facility? So I think for commercial reasons, I can entirely understand why they want a toilet facility, whether that's the right location, and the matter if they're putting it up without permission, and perhaps if they're putting it inside their farm, there'll be some way to give that all difficulty in actually doing anything with it, to give it a shared facility with their workforce, which is coming out of it. So we've got a difficult one to deal with. As I said originally, I have real concern about some of the extended use which the neighbours are complaining about, for the use for other groups, which they are permitted to have some of the groups there, and the way in which some of those are parking and using it to put their tables over there, and was it not that? That's not what we're dealing with this application, but I think that officer's rightly called it that, in exception to that, is to try and move it back to the issue of toilets and toilets over there. They have put some screening up at the moment, I've done the job, they have put more screening. Their general view is, is on terms of visual impact, their view is, that they've sold in that we've been permissioned for a very large house to be put in, with an even larger garage than door to build it, and therefore their three wooden sheds, toilets, their view is, is really nearly over there compared to what would break permission for in terms of a large house, an official gallery just three floors away from it. And I think there's some validity in that all, from the neighbour's point of view, their objections to toilets are, one in particular is very clear in saying, they didn't feel that they wanted to stop the operating business, but felt there were other things they were doing which would be able to be done in a different way, and the impact produced, and they feel that by providing toilets, it does allow them to continue with that alternative uses without the toilets, I think they believe that some of those alternative uses are not by intent, how those attempts, what the use for other purposes where large groups attend, which is perfectly permissible, I think they feel that without toilets, there would be less chance that they would take place. So not an easy one, Chairman, it is far not justification, this is a fairly long-term Rotherham agricultural family, if it was anywhere else other than there, we might have a different view, because it's on the initial concern of the water comes of the policies we've got, so therefore it would be well considered so. But I would like to share.
Thank you very much indeed. Other members? Mr Oxley.
Thank you. I just like clarification, when I look at the planning history, I see we've got application on two thousand and fourteen, zero four seven eight slash full, and that was refused, and this is for now two thousand and fourteen, eleven oh five. And I can't see the difference between the previous and existing, so could we have clarification of that, please?
Yes, certainly, the current application proposes some additional landscaping over the water, present on site at the time of previous application, so I just can, the existing trees located around here were present in that earlier application, and now proposing some additional planting in this location here.
And are they hoping that will mitigate the previous refusal, so they're trying to reduce the impact? Or are they trying to alleviate fears of the planning department and come to a satisfactory conclusion with this latest application, is that right?
As far as I can tell, the only reason to provide the additional landscaping would be to mitigate the visual impact, so.
Right, because I mean, it is confusing in that context, I think if they had placed the emphasis on the additional planting, rather than simply putting in the same application of a few more trees and hoping that it would be passed, you know, I think would have had a more beneficial impact. And looking at, looking at the toilet block itself, I mean, the way that it's painted, it's set in with the big hedge behind it, it is, they have made an effort to obscure it, but as I say, I'm not looking at, we're looking at the bigger picture, we're looking at the impact on the local ground, on the very sensitive area that is to have been committed to that. And there are, as we know from past experience, there are a number of developers who have tried and some have actually succeeded, but most have failed, to put recreational facilities into what is the jewel in the crown of London, which is Rotherham water, a very beautiful area, which we have to work very hard to ensure is unspoilt for future visitors, if we can, as much as we can within the framework, the framework. So whilst it is difficult, and from an economic view, I can see that it will have an impact on their ability to generate income in camping, in my experience in the past, is usually all you have is a drain cover, which you empty your chemical toilet into, so this is the next, is one step up from that. But as I say, it does go against everything that we have written down about that in the convention, what we are going to commit, and I believe that they should have gone, instead of coming back with the existing plan pretty much, with additional planting, they should have perhaps gone away and had a rethink to where to put the toilets and come back with a whole new application. Perhaps they would have looked a bit more favourable, but I can't see any difference between the one which was last year and this one.
Thank you, Chairman. I find the executive summary quite interesting. Planning policy requires that such facilities in the countryside are essential to the provision for visitor facilities, so we're actually saying that these facilities are essential. And having listened to both councillor Oxley and councillor King, we're on a sort of a knife edge in a way. So I think we do have a slight dilemma in the English here, as to what is required and what is not required. These farms, they've got to make a living somehow, rock the water and water there, first and foremost, for people to enjoy it, to fish on it and sail on it and walk around. They then realise they didn't actually leave the water. So, you know, I think we've got to try and encourage this sort of use, and I think we've just got a little bit kind of a problem, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Mr Oxley. Other members? Mister there?
Yes, Mr Chairman. I'd like to support this application, but I'm struggling, as councillor Oxley said, it is one of the most sensitive sites in the area. And I don't think with all due respect to officers, that photographs did any justice from a distance tonight, if you can't see them at all, it was a good, it was a very misty day. No time's precious, so site site might have been a good one to have for. Did you get in site site?
Yes, I did.
Was that on there?
It was very difficult to get the picture from down towards the bottom of site's lane, unfortunately, as it's, it's controlled, you don't get to that.
Yeah, it's just, to me, it doesn't do it, do it, does the landscape any justice to see how it will sit from the distance? So, as Mr Councillor Oxley said, this is on a knife edge, but policy seems to dominate in a frame of, with regards to what I am going to do.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Mr Cartwright, Mr Oxley.
Yes, I agree, this is very difficult. Exempt sites like this, and it's had members of those clubs to use them, and members should be well aware that an exempt site is a very low-key pad and won't necessarily provide the facilities that you get on the modern day countryside, but it does allow people to camp in areas where planning permission wouldn't have been granted for a full-scale campsite. So I feel that our policy is very important to this location, and over the years, we have, I think by and large, that quiet. I do have sympathy for the farmer, for the African brother, but I have to go with policy.
Thank you. Mr Oxley.
Yeah, with the same difficulty, I'd like to, I'd like to support, I think a discreet exempt site could work there very well. What concerns me is the suggestion of other activities that possibly would take place on the site, and that scares me, because it opens the gates to all sorts of things taking place. So I think I'll have to go with this in my policy.
Anyone else? Mr Oxley.
I feel with planting, it wouldn't be took away. I think there will be other things that might happen, that'll happen whether you've got toilets in there or not. I think we just need to look at it, I certainly have policy, but also I feel we shouldn't be sort of trying to support farmers that are trying to make a living. Brooklyn says it's the one sport local. And we can't put it, actually, we're in there for this. That's all, I'm proposing in fact, let's set the ball round then.
So what is your proposal, Mr. Oxley?
I'm proposing reject after recommendation.
Do you want a second of that?
I'll say.
Second. Might in that case we would take the vote, it's been proposed in the second that we approve in fact, the value of proposal. And those in favor of that, please? And against? And extensions? That therefore falls, so may I have a proposal? This is cartwright in line with the officer's recommendation. Do I have a second of that, please? Mr. Oxley, thank you. And those in favor? Seven and against? Two and extensions? Well, that is duly refused in the officer's report, thank you. We'll now move to the field.
Mr. Chad, sorry, I had to play an interesting, apparently I believe we've all got two applications in ourselves, first of all. What's up? I'm sorry to have threatened you. I had to just declare.
It's just about the same, all of you first on this there. Yes, thank you. Sorry, if there are any comments or Mr. Colin, perhaps you can comment?
I think it's one of those where it is a very subjective decision. The inspector could see that it would have an impact, he came down inside, he couldn't feel the impact, so he absolutely refused it. We were the other side of the line, we thought it did do too much harm to the landscape. But we know it's subjective, it's not setting aside policy or causing issues in that respect. And I think it's the first one in practice reports you allowed for quite a length of time.
Thank you very much, any comments, you know, at all? And the ones that are pending, you can see. And so that concludes that, I haven't done a running meeting for any other business. So at six thirty four, I think it is, if you can, we can close, thank you.
Can I say?
Sorry, yes.
I just wanted to say that we have the elections coming up. And if in the event that I'm not being elected, I'd just like to say that I'm enjoying the rest of the season.
Thank you very much indeed. Equally, so, so, thank you.
I'd like to say what a great pleasure it is to always see Mark at these meetings.
I suggest this conversation probably to continue in the pub, not this turn of the world.
I hope we see you back.
Okay.
I hope so too.
Thank you.
I'll be there, I'll be there.